Good evening and welcome to the regular City Council meeting for Monday, April 22nd, 2019. At this time, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Here.
Councilmember Doroset.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Ted Baze from the Seventh Day Adventist, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Father, thank you for your interest in this city and your desire to bless each citizen that is here. Lord, I thank you for our leaders that are before us here tonight. I thank you for their interest in the good of this town and their dedication to helping each person live a better life. But I pray that you will be with each item that is placed on the agenda here tonight. I pray that you will bless the decisions that are made. We thank you that we could place this meeting in your loving hands, and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and will never be beaten, just as for all.
We have one presentation this evening. It is a certificate of recognition to the Series 911 dispatchers in honor of National Dispatchers Week 2019. And I think we have Representative Mark Anderson that's going to accept this. So let me read the proclamation first. Certificate of recognition presented to the City of Series 911 Dispatch Center in honor of the, in honor of Public Safety Telecommunications Week 2019. With our sincere appreciation for being the voice of calm when someone else is in the worst moment of their life, for the heroic actions you perform every day, for going above and beyond the call of duty, we thank you. The Series City Council recognizes your commitment. Thank you for the outstanding service each and every day presented this 22nd day of April 2019.
Hello, I am Mark Anderson, the dispatch supervisor. I want to thank the council for taking time to recognize our police dispatchers during National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. I represent eight talented men and women who dedicate themselves to selflessly serving our community. Dispatchers are the ultimate first responder and are often forgotten. It means a lot to be able to accept us on behalf of the Series Police Department and for the opportunity to be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we'll move to citizens' communications to council on matters not included on the agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, I'll start with the speaker cards that I have. The first one is Jackie Wimberly.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you. I'm here on behalf of Persephone Guild, and I just wanted to express our appreciation for helping us make the bench project for Persephone Park a reality. It was installed last week, and it's just a real honor to be able to have been part of that. And I also wanted to thank publicly Rob Harrington, who we worked with, who helped, helped me navigate the whole process. So we are very much in appreciation. It's such a good experience that we're now looking forward to our next project. So we're hoping to maybe put in a water fountain in that very same park. So keep that in mind. But just again, thank you so much for helping us make that project a reality.
Great, thank you. Next is Randy Sehny.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm here tonight on behalf of Series Youth Soccer Organization. We'd just like to thank you for your continued support of the River Bluff Soccer Complex. If you haven't been out there lately, the complex is beginning to look like it should. That's thanks to countless hours, I'm sure, devoted by staff and the employees of the City of Series getting it back up to working condition. And we'd like just to remind you that it is a centerpiece for this community, and if we can keep it in beautiful working order, then I think that'd be an effort that would show dividends for the entire community. So we just wanted to thank you tonight.
Thank you. Next, Linda Chambers.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am a longtime resident here in Series, and I reside, my primary residence is 1313 Grover in Modesto, so we're part of what's considered no man's land. And I wanted to bring to your attention tonight a struggle we have experienced at that residence for the last several years, which is sand in our water. And I would like to first acknowledge your Public Works Department that has been a wonderful team partner through this process. They've been very quick to respond and help with the concerns that we've had, flushing our lines and taking care of the issue. I did come and speak with Mr. Wells back in January to bring to his attention that we're at a point where we are a little concerned that this has gone on for this length of time, and I do know Public Works, I believe, has gone out for bid in regards to obtaining certain filters that are required for the well that services our area. And during the last six months or so, several of our neighbors are also now starting to experience sand in their water. And with that, fortunately, my husband's been a real hands-on, flush the sprinklers, flush the house, take care of all of the issues, fix the machines when they get clogged with sand. And again, Public Works has been very supportive. They do come out each month now, and they flush the lines for our neighborhood to help circumvent and prevent this from continuing. But I did want to bring it to your attention that I am hopeful that the bid process will get resolved fairly soon. My last communication, I believe, was March, that it was out for bid. I don't know where it stands at this point. I do watch your agenda each, every other week, hoping to see something come before the council. But I wanted you to know that I'm hopeful that something soon will take place. It's time to start our sprinklers again, so now we need to flush our lines again, take all the sprinkler caps off, run all the lines, get all the sand out, clear the sprinkler units that make it work, and my husband will take care of that and get things up and running. But I am hopeful something soon will take place. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I don't have any more speaker cards, but is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item?
Jeanne Akeley, Series. Recently, there was media coverage about Modesto or the Santa Saus County getting $100,000 to take care of some garbage problems in the city there. Or I assume most of it was concerned about the city and not so much the county. If that's so, I'd like to know, are we going to get anything? Because we got problems too. And Chance Condit was nice enough to send me a map that came from, I guess, Tom Westbrook about the areas that are still county inside the city limits. And if you look at that, the streets you can't make out, just the major ones. But we've all been in those areas, and we need some money out there to take care of those places because they're really gone, and that's county land. So we need to find out if we can get some funding to put somewhere to where we can clean up those areas if the county's not going to do it for us with that $100,000. And the other issue is, and I briefly just talked to Tom Westbrook about that, I guess a lot of people in the audience here don't know either, and maybe all the City Council does, street vendors. Evidently, from what I've heard from, again, Chance Condit, that, and Tom Westbrook tonight, that the state's going to mandate that every city in California, I guess, is going to be able to have street vendors out there. And if you've seen the ones that we've had, and that lady, and the man, or whoever's out there for the last four or five years with the little bell and a three-wheel plywood box all over the place, who knows if any of that stuff's healthy or anything? But I didn't know that the state was going to do that. Can we say no? You know, I'm curious. So if you can answer those two questions, that's all I got.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item?
Hi, it's Harpreet Singh. I'd like to address councils and also the residents of Series. So we have been organizing Annual Sick American Awareness Event from about six years, so this will be our seventh year. So it's on June 7th. So this year's topic would be about bullying in schools, because this is really a very important topic. It's not just related to the sick community, but I think with all the other communities. And it's really important to make awareness about this event, because I think it's, it's important to address these issues still while kids are kids. And, and it's hard to address these issues once you are an adult. So, so we would be having a good speaker, who is a native speaker of Series, Jaspreet Kor. She's with the community organizer at Jakara Movement. And so I invite all the council, and I will be sending an official email for the invitation. And I would be happy to also invite all the other residents of Series. And if anyone wants to get details about the event, so they can reach me. And the event is on June 7th, and it's at 11:00 a.m. in the Large Assembly Hall in Series Community Center. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item? Okay. Next, we will move to appointments to boards and commissions. We have none this evening. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare conflict of interest on any of the consent counter items or one discussion item?
Well, I would like to declare a conflict of interest on number nine. I do not benefit from it. I do have a brother that works for County 911 Services. He doesn't benefit from it, but just for sake of, of appearances, I would like to abstain from voting on number nine.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion other than item nine? I would like to pull item three, as I wasn't a part of that meeting, so just like to handle that separately. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to have a consent counter item pulled for further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for direction on the other items first.
Move to approve 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, and 11.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember Doroset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Nubia, can I read item three if I'm not going to vote on it, or I need to step back from that?
You can read it, but it will have to be motioned, seconded, and voted on by the remainder of the council.
Okay, but I can direct that activity?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, item number three, approval of the minutes of April 8th, 2019, for the regular City Council meeting. Are there any questions or comments on this? Okay, then I will look for direction.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember Doroset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
And Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0 with one abstention by Mayor Viera.
Okay, item number nine, resolution number 2019-44, approving a request for subsidy from Santa Saus County Board of Supervisors for fire dispatch services for fiscal year 2019-2020. Is there anyone on the council that had any questions or comments on this item?
I do.
Okay.
The staff report says the subsidy will last for a year, and then there's going to be an analysis that will begin on continuing to receive dispatch services from SR 911, but it doesn't say in the staff report when that will begin. Do you have a date on that or an idea?
Yeah, we hope to do that this year with, with our Newman contract to add any additional dispatchers, you know, once that gets up and running, as of July 1st, we'll have to start that analysis. With the effort on the municipal code, it'll probably be fall before we start that analysis, but we'd hope to have it completed by the end of the fiscal year.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to council for direction.
Move to adopt resolution number 2019-44.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember Doroset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0 with one abstention by Councilmember Klein.
Okay, thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening, no public hearing and no new business, so we have one discussion item. It is the code enforcement overview.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening Sergeant Cooley will be doing the presentation on the code enforcement and how the activities of the Code Enforcement Division have been carried out, and a few highlights of issues that we've been addressing and dealing with recently.
Can everybody hear me? All right, so we're going to dip into this quick. Well, since I've done some PowerPoint, let me slide you. Is it on now? All right, here we go. We're going to dive right in. So I'm going to give you guys an overview of what we do, how we do it, what we don't do, and how citizens can help. For those of you that don't know, our code enforcement unit is under the umbrella of the Police Department, so we do fall under the Police Department's mission and identity, vision, and mission. And our mission is that we are committed to partnering with the community to reduce crime and improve the quality of life for our citizens, and our work was done with pride, integrity, and excellence. Currently, our personnel is one police supervisor, which is me. I supervise the unit. We just got a brand-new code enforcement officer, so now our numbers are two. So we're very thankful for that, and thank you for giving us that position, it's definitely needed. And we do have one shared secretary administrative assistant. She's full-time for fire and also shared being our secretary for code and our abandoned vehicle abatement unit. What we do, what we don't do, really, we do everything. So in just, we perform a wide variety of technical duties. We enforce our city municipal codes. The biggest part of that I've seen in, since I've supervised this unit, is that there is a huge part of education that is actually given to our citizens that don't know that they can't do certain stuff, or they have to have stuff a certain way. So we spend a real big time as educating our public. Just today, I was out with somebody, and they had no idea that they couldn't have a vehicle on the road that has over six months' expired registration on the road. So, you know, it, we, again, educate them, and that's part of our job. So we serve as a resource also with our other departments and our members of the city and the general public. Our hot topics, as you guys will know, are illegal dumps, blight, trash, vehicles, vacant lots, homeless camps, and substandard buildings. We'll dive in a little bit more on each of these topics a little bit later, but touching on right now for vehicles, I'd like to talk about the abatement program. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our vehicle abatement program. It's funded by Stan Cog, and we get a certain amount of money back each, each quarter from their reports. And depending on how many abandoned vehicles Series actually has, the true definition of abandoned vehicle, we also get money for those stats, the ones we find and take care of, and if they're blight or so forth, get them off the street or get them off private So complaints and prioritization. We receive multiple complaints from multiple people, from other city departments such as Public Works, City Hall, Engineering, the Police Department, and Recreation. We also get numerous reports, obviously, from, from our citizens. Each one of those are taken and evaluated, and we rate those with a priority. So explaining a priority from non-priority. A priority case for us would be a dwelling that people are inhabiting that may have no electric, or it may have some very hazardous stuff inside the house with children living in it, with any kind of human living in it. We're going to take those cases on right then, and that's a higher priority. A low priority would be, what I just mentioned earlier, a vehicle on the street that has expired registration over six months or in a driveway. So we have to rate those in order to meet the needs of the city and meet the needs of what we have to do as a unit in order to handle that problem. Every case is important to us, but we do have to prioritize those, and sometimes we don't get around to the ones we want to as soon as we want to, but eventually we do. Right now, we're averaging about 15 new cases a week and 30 open cases that we investigate. Just for example, last week, we had 58 inspections that we had to do here in Series. That took all of my two guys, it's one guy, the new guy's in training, took every bit of all four days that they worked to get all those done. So you can see there was no time for any proactivity at all whatsoever, and we're handling the cases they had and taking on the new cases. I, I learned this a long time ago, police department from an old sergeant I used to work for, but we rate our cases in A, B, and C. A being the most important case, this is a drop what you're doing and get it done right now kind of case. The B case, it's a regular status, we'll get it signed and add it to the list, and then we have a C case, which is non-priority, but we'll check in, into when time permits. So I want to give you guys their case process. So this is something we also have to tell our citizens and the people that are complaining and the people that are getting enforced on. So when we receive a complaint, we review it for applicable violations. It may not be code enforcement, so we may need to send it to streets, or we may need to send it to engineering for that complaint. But most of the time, we get all the complaints that are coming in, not all, but I would say most. To investigate that, we will contact the responsible and visually check the violations. Let's say it's a vacant lot. Obviously, we're not going to contact anybody. We can do a drive-by visual, take evidence, photos of that, and then try to contact the owner. Next, we will collect evidence, like I just said, and take a photo of it, or collect any material that we need to and book it for evidence. We then go back and write case notes and a detailed report of what we did, what we saw, and what the violations are, and what the actual homeowner, or business owner, or lot owner needs to do in order to correct those violations. We then send a notice of violation to the occupant of the home and/or the owner of the property. So the owner of the business, owner of the house, owner of the vacant lot, or what have you. We mostly try to tackle the occupant. If the occupant is not, let's say, cooperating and not correcting the violations in manner in our timeframe, then we will contact the owner and start squeezing them to get something done, and usually that works. After, we give them 10 days, and then we will do a reinspection. We will go back out to that residence to do a reinspection to see if those violations have been corrected. If those violations have been, haven't been corrected, we reach out to the property owner or the occupant, and we try to talk them into correcting those violations without enforcing it quite yet. We are very big on working with our citizens and not jumping to conclusions and writing them a ticket right away. That doesn't say that we don't write tickets, but we try to work with our citizens to give them a more than enough opportunity to correct those violations. If that doesn't happen, and they still don't correct it, we write them a citation, and then we send them a notice to abate. And that is a notice from the city that they need to abate that problem that's at their residence, business, and that their property is. If that doesn't work, then we keep the process going. Okay? This could take, sometimes it takes less than five days, and sometimes it takes years to get this stuff done. I have a couple case studies later on the presentation I'll give you examples from, but for right now, we'll move on. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the Fourth Amendment. I'm sure you guys are well aware of it, if not, our citizens hopefully are. It's the right to the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, effects, against unreasonable search and seizure should not be violated, and no warrant shall issue but upon probable cause. What this means is that we don't, we cannot violate this person's Fourth Amendment. So let's say we got a complaint of somebody's house that had, unfortunately, had some feces in the house, urine, and stuff like that, really hazardous stuff. Well, if we didn't have consent to enter that residence, if we didn't have exigent circumstances to enter that residence, or we didn't have a warrant to enter that residence, we can't go in there to check that. Okay? We just can't, we can't do it, so we have to have probable cause. So I will tell you, though, that I, being a police officer, and one of our code officers, being a former police officer, we are good at talking to people, so it usually doesn't come to that. And we can usually find a way into the residence or in the backyard, check the violations, and work with our citizens that way. I want to talk a little bit about curtilage. If you guys don't know what it is, it's the area around the house. So let's say you have your house here, and you have your fence that's going all around your house. And let's say that fence is this tall, and I'm obviously under that fence line. I cannot, you move, make any movements, get a ladder, step on a vehicle, to look over that fence, I can't even stand on my tippy toes to do that. That's a violation of the law, and that's covered in the Fourth Amendment. So another example is, let's say we have a backyard that's, we've had complaints on, and next door is a two-story house. And we'll say, hey, let's just talk to these neighbors here, go up to their second story, and then look down, and we can see that and take some photos. No, still can't do that. So then we'd have to go back, write an inspection warrant, or get consent, to talk to the owner to go into there to look at that violation in the, in the, within that curtilage area. We do have authority to inspect, but as I've said before, if we can't get into a residence, or we can't get into a certain type of industrial property, or we can't get into the backyard, we would have to get ourselves an inspection warrant. And then if, after that, we did the inspection warrant, that's been served, we've got all our evidence of the violation corrected, and if they still haven't corrected them and they won't let us back in, we would have to do an abatement warrant. So we would have to contract with somebody or use our own personnel to actually go out there and correct the violations that we have.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Where do you get an administrative inspection warrant? Is that like a regular warrant that you have to go to a judge?
Correct.
Wow.
We would utilize our city attorney's office to do that.
Okay.
It's a little bit different than a criminal warrant.
Oh, so it's the city attorney who issues it, and you don't have to go...
We would go through our contract services of attorney services.
So councilmember, to answer that question, what we would do is work with staff to make sure that we have all the documentation we need. We'd prepare the request to the court. And it's the same, it's a similar process as a criminal warrant, although the courts aren't going to necessarily place the same level of urgency as it would maybe with a criminal warrant. of urgency as it would maybe with a criminal warrant, but it does go down that process. And the idea is, we're seeking the court's permission to, in essence, impede someone's Fourth Amendment right. So we're going to their property, we wanna inspect, but we need the okay from the court before we do that.
Thank you. So it does really add time to what the citizen may think that the city isn't doing anything about an issue, but if we have to go this avenue, it really does add a lot of time to the process.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. You're welcome. So I threw this up here, and I'm sure, I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but these are our costs for our administrative citations. The first one's a hundred dollars, second one's two fifty, and the third is five hundred, and every one after is five hundred. Sometimes we do reach that third citation, and sometimes we reach a fourth and a fifth, unfortunately. But usually, again, it depends on who we're working with, and depends on the owner, depends on the occupant, on whether or not they're gonna fix or correct those violations, unfortunately.
Are those costs fair, equal?
I'm sorry?
Are those costs fair and equal, compatible to other cities?
I don't know compared to other cities. Honestly, I don't.
Council member, I can respond to that question. It is, it is comparable to other jurisdictions. Additionally, under California law, there are caps on first time, second time, and multiple violations, so there's only so much the city can go above and beyond unless there's some type of extreme circumstance, or a reason why we would issue a citation for a larger amount, and that amount usually still has to be, it has to be approved by the council beforehand. So this idea of maybe establishing a fee schedule for different types of violations, but the default administrative citation amount is comparable to most jurisdictions.
Thank you. You're welcome. All right, illegal dumps, one of our fun subjects that we have here in town, unfortunately. So we get illegal dumps reported to us by citizens, by other departments in the city, and everyone has to be verified if it's an actual legal dump. We do do our best to find out the, who the responsible was for this illegal dump, but the amount of illegal dumps that happened, unfortunately, during that week, it's very difficult to find the person responsible. If it's in front of a house, or in front of a business, we probably have a pretty good idea who did that, but then again, we still need to prove it in order to hold them responsible. So at all, at the end of the day, we do our best. We do utilize cameras and conduct surveillance in certain, one of our problem areas. As discussed in earlier council meetings, we have been sitting on Moffitt quite a bit, I know I have. We have installed a camera there, and we do our best to catch people. To my knowledge, we haven't had a dump there in a long time. It may be, and I think, I think that's great. So I think it's a fact to the signs that went up, I think it's the fact that the camera is up, they may not know about it, but they will now. I think it's the fact that I've sat out there, and I've watched them, and I've caught them actually doing it. So I think the word got out in that area, and hopefully it keeps up. But we will be utilizing other cameras in other parts of the city in order to catch these people and hold them responsible. We'd also speak to neighbors, and we try to get witnesses to these legal dumps. We solicit help from the public. It's something that a lot of people don't like. Some people honestly don't care about them, and they won't talk to us about it, if you can believe that. But we work with the ones that will. We ask them to take information down, such as vehicle information, license plate, subject descriptions. That's all helpful for us when we go find the responsible for that. We are having a CMC update on our illegal dumps, and Mr. Wells can talk about that more if you'd like. Every citizen is allowed two free pickups from Bertolati. However, this doesn't cover apartment complexes, unfortunately. I think that the education is went out by the city departments in order to let our citizens know that they do get free pickups, but unfortunately, not everybody utilizes that. Vehicles on private and public property, it's unlawful for us to tow any vehicle if we don't have probable cause. That's basically what that says. We have to have probable cause in order to tow a vehicle. Like today's example I gave you, I was patrolling down a street, I saw a vehicle with an orange tag, ran the plate through dispatch, came back, expired over six months, vehicle had cobwebs, flat tire, I towed it and got it out of there. It took less than twenty minutes to do. But that's what we have to do, we have to have a reason to do that. Private property, it's a little bit different, because now we're dealing with the Fourth Amendment that I discussed earlier, right? So we have to follow certain restrictions. So we have to give a ten-day notice, a notice and letter, a notice of violation, and then a notice to abate. They don't get it off private property, then we do move the enforcement level, and we start writing citations. We talk to them, and they say, hey, can we get it off, help you get it off? Do you want this car anymore? Some people don't want the car anymore, so we'll junk it. We have a system where we can junk the vehicles, they go to the tow yard, the vehicle's out of there, and the problem solved. So we have to, it varies, case to case, what we can do with these people to have these vehicles on their private property, but we do do the best we can. I will speak a little bit about the abandoned vehicle abatement. So we have one part-time officer that handles that. Unfortunately, we haven't had one in a while, we've had some bad luck hiring one. However, we do have some good luck, and hopefully, this officer will be on in the next couple weeks, hopefully, and he'll have to get trained. He is a former officer here, so he will, he knows a little bit about vehicle abatement and towing vehicles. The abandoned cart prevention plan, if you guys didn't know, this is all in our CMC to reference later, but the name of the business, address, phone number, of the premises and address, phone number have to be on the cart. So if that's, if any information's not on the cart, that's a violation between the contract with us and that business. Actually, I don't know if there's a contract, so that's a, that's a bad statement, sorry. A procedure for providing notification to customers that removal of the carts from the premises is prohibited. So they have to provide that information to their customers. Third, a description of the physical measures that will be implemented to prevent removal of the carts from the premises. And finally, they have to have a retrieval plan in place. Homeless camps, I don't know if you all are aware, but last year, there was a case decision that came out, Martin versus Boise, saying that basically, we cannot prevent homeless sleeping on public property. If there's not available shelter, and I will read verbatim here, in their summary, the opinion judges wrote, "As long as there is no option of sleeping indoors, the government cannot criminalize indigent homeless people for sleeping outdoors on public property, or the false premise that they had a choice in the matter." I will say that this does not give the homeless people permission to break other laws, such as trespassing, being in violation of vehicle code, or being in violation of any kind of vehicle code. We will still hold them responsible if there are other laws being broken, but the mere fact of going to Smyrna Park and sleeping under a tree at night is not illegal. Vacant lots, I think we can safely say that this is becoming a very busy time for us, springtime, so a lot of grass is growing, there's a lot of sunshine. We are partnering with our fire department on weed abatement. They recognize that this is a fire hazard, and so we're working with them and their prevention plan, their fire prevention plan, to address all these vacant lots of high weeds, fire hazard, it's blight, it's ugly, sometimes there's trash on there, so we are working on that. It's sometimes difficult to track down the owner of these properties, but we do have a system in place that is working, and we do have to send them, again, send them a notice of violation, give them time to get it fixed, then go do a reinspection to see if they've actually taken care of it. What we don't do, so we don't clean up homeless camps on private property. That's not our job. We don't physically remove illegal dumps, we have people in place for that, and businesses and partnership with Bertolati that helps us with that. We don't enter private property to correct violations. We don't investigate civil matters, and we don't process illegal dumps for DNA and fingerprints. And although you're probably thinking, my gosh, do actually people think that you do that? And I will say, yes, they think we do that. So, no, we don't. And we don't force the CMC without due process. We'll talk a little bit about summary abatements. So if we have a situation, a health and safety situation that is present, and it needs to be fixed immediately, and we cannot get the homeowner to do that, we can work with our city attorney to get a summary abatement to make that happen faster than they think it should be fixed. So some examples for that are cases of merge with summary basis. So we're basically, we're making these, for example, open wells, discharges of sewage, hazardous waste, and abandoned refrigerators are extreme hazards in populated areas. So if we see something like that, we're gonna take right away measures to fix that and correct that violation and get that fixed right away. And we'll work with our city attorney to get that done. So we're gonna start, we'll look at a couple case studies. This one is Sixth Street, and it's south of Park Street and between El Camino and Number Six. So this is a homeless camp. That's one of, that were probably three that were on there at the time. The property owner lives in Oakdale, and when we started this case, we received the complaint on nine thirteen sixteen. And in between those dates of the abated date, we contacted the owner, sent the owner a notice of violation, sent the owner a notice to abate, cited the owner several times, and met with them in person several times, and it was finally abated on one twenty-five of eighteen. So you can see, that was a long time getting that done. There wasn't anything that would jump out to say that we needed to do a summary abatement. I felt appropriate that the owners would handle this, because it was their responsibility as a landowner here in Series to take care of that problem. Unfortunately, recently, we've had to open this case back up, because there has been some more trash, and some other things that have showed up. No homeless camps, but we are seeing a lot of trash. This one would probably be the most extreme case. This is a case study of Walnut, and this house was being built, and unfortunately, burned. So on October of two thousand and eleven, we actually got notified and started a case on this, and this was well before I obviously came into the unit. In between those times, we did, there was a trespassing, there was a fire that totaled a structure, unsafe structure, probate, bank on, receivership. All these things happened with all that year that tied up this for this long. And just recently, as of two weeks ago, I drove by, and they're finally building a brand-new home, and it actually looks very good. But this is a really extreme case, but just gives you an idea of the things that are involved, working through the city attorney's office, and working with the owner, and working with the owner that received the receivership on this, and then citations to the banks that owned it for a certain period of time. But this took several years, unfortunately.
Is this the one that Lamelli was in?
I'm sorry?
Is this the one that Lamelli was in?
No, no, different property.
No, different?
Okay. And this is, as Mr. Coley mentioned, the receivership, we really didn't get into much detail, because it's kind of that extreme case, but the receivership, in essence, the courts are granting us, are granting another, a third party, an independent third party, the basically, ownership rights to that property to fix the problem. And in essence, what happens is, they take possession of the property, fix it, and then resell it, and if there's any revenues left over after they've done all that efforts, then we might recover our costs of that receivership process. But it is the most extreme case of anything code-related, where we're literally getting the court to grant us ownership rights to a third party to be able to correct the situation, and then it is resold back to the, you know, basically, the private market, and then anything that's left over, we may, if we're lucky, recover some level of our costs. But as you can see, over a case of eight years, you know, the cost that we've spent on legal is a pretty big number.
How our citizens can help. So these first, these next two slides are from our city application, it's called Go Request. Any citizen or city department employee can utilize this. We use it all the time. Mainly, we use it for illegal dumps. So if we get notified that, hey, we need to go check an illegal dump at a location, we'll drive by there, we can see the illegal dump, open up our app, take a picture of it, and, and basically, send it through, and now we've made a case of it, and then that information gets forwarded on to Bertolati to pick up. It's actually pretty easy, and it doesn't take long at all. So this is what you'll see when you open up the app. You can see, and you'll hit new issue, and then this next page will come up, and you're gonna click code enforcement, and then the next screen is gonna come up, choices on the left here. So you would hit illegal dump, and it would indicate on your next page. This gives you an opportunity to add a photo, if you are in the area and that you do see it, the time of day, you can add any comments and descriptions that you would help us, would be appreciated. And then after you've done that, and you've confirmed that you're in the right place, hit submit. That generates a case to us, and that's the best way to help us, is using this application. If you're not into phones, and you don't really like using your phone or an app like that, you can use the desktop. Down here, it's Ask Series, you hit that, and the same thing, a choice will come up, you hit code enforcement. The next page will give you all your choices that you had on the app. Again, illegal dump, fill out the time of day, cross street, your information, and if you have a photo, and simply hit submit, and that will also generate a case for us. This is our contact information. That red, the number on top is our main office, goes to our secretary. That's my information, Officer Alvarez's, and now Officer Varney's information. This time, I'll entertain any questions from you, if you have any.
Is there anyone on the council that has any questions? Okay, Councilmember Klein?
Do you by chance know how many ABC cases you investigated last year?
Last year, no. But I can tell you that most recently, at the end of March, we are keeping, we are now doing monthly reports, and you will be getting those each month as we do them. You can see exactly what we're doing, the amount of citations we're working, the amount of cases we're working, the amount of vehicles we towed. You guys are gonna start seeing all that. But for last year, that would be hard to do.
Okay, and I do know that, you know, we do have another code enforcement, but, you know, because of, you know, some of the things that have been going on, you know, to me, it'd be interesting how many man-hours we're spending, you know, on, on some of these cases, and, you know, for even repeated.
Well, our hours are tracked on our system that we do use, so that is something we can track also for these types of cases, the things. You referring to the extreme cases? Yes, it can be tracked.
And my last one is vehicles. Vehicles that are on private property, and, you know, let's say it's a violation of expired tags, non-operable. They're expired tags, but they're registered non-operable. You can run the plate and make sure that you know they're, they're registered non-operable, correct?
Correct.
So what's the linked process for, let's say it's a non-operable vehicle parked in my driveway, for try to get it to be abated?
Again, it would refer you back to the slide for the case process. So we would identify that there actually is a violation, and then we'd move into going out and inspecting that location, see if there is a violation, and then sending a notice of abate, notice of violation.
But say a property owner has a non-operable vehicle, and I'm just gonna say, let's say it's a classic vehicle that, you know, he's planning on doing something with, does he have to abate it?
Well, again, I'll remind you that we work with our citizens, we wanna work with them. If the vehicle is not a true abandoned vehicle, meaning it's lacking an engine, it's lacking a motor, lacking windows, lacking doors, lacking wheels and tires, then it's not an abandoned vehicle, it's a vehicle in the driveway. So if a person has a non-op, they've aired up the tires, they've washed the vehicle, and they've put a cover on it, we like to work with the spirit of the law and say that that's actually okay in town.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
On this slide, authority to inspect, one of the sentences say, the use of a sound level measurement device to measure noise disturbances. But I thought when we talked about it two weeks ago, when Mr. But I thought when we talked about it two weeks ago, when Mr. Yeekly was telling us about his noise problems, that it was the police department that handled all noise complaints, not code enforcement.
As a general thumb, just because most of our noise complaints come in after hours and on weekends.
So, yeah, our, our noise complaints, actually, you can make it through code enforcement, we'll get them. Often, on the weekends, I'll get them, and on my phone, I get a notification when a case has been sent to us. I'll notify dispatch if I have the time to do that off-duty to send a police car over there. But for a perfect example of a noise complaint is the Western Dental that's located on Richland, south of Hatch. We got a complaint from the neighbor next to there, saying that at night, they were hearing a beeping sound. And we're like, man, what the heck's a beeping sound? So, we went and contacted Western Dental that next Monday, and we confirmed with them that it was part of their security program to have that beep. So, we talked with the Western Dental, they're gonna get that worked, so that person that's living next to him is not hearing that no more. So, that's a little bit more code-related. When you got music and stuff on the weekends, we encourage our citizens to call our dispatch, and report that to the police. A call will be generated, and we'll get a police officer out as soon as we can to handle that.
Thank you.
When it's reported to online, or through the app, then there's gonna be a delay in that service.
Thank you.
Any other question?
No.
Councilmember Condon?
Sure. When does due process start, when the complaint is made, or when the notice is sent out?
Well, the due process starts right when we go to that
When you make the contact.
Correct.
Okay. And, do you, do you think we need more people to be proactive? How many more code enforcement officers would it possibly take in your estimation to be proactive?
Well, we'd have to analyze, let's give the second guy a chance as soon as we get.
Okay, well, that's good.
So, as soon as he gets trained, we're gonna have, obviously, he's gonna take half the workload. So, there may be a little bit more time for them to be proactive. Right now, he's in training, extensive training that we have for him, to make sure that he's gonna do the right things when we let him go. So, let's give it a little bit more, but, you know, that's something certainly that the council can discuss later on, is adding in another budget year.
Sure.
I'm not gonna complain if you give me, complain if you give me one, but I think that's something for future discussion.
Even part-time officers if needed?
Sure.
And how often is code enforcement called out to Lazy Wheels Mobile Home Park? That's kind of an eyesore going off.
We would have to research that and get back to you.
If you could get back to me, I'd appreciate that. Would that be categorized as a substandard building, in your opinion?
Well, the, the mobile home parks are, and you wanna explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so, mobile home parks and Lazy Wheels in particular, especially up until recently, mobile home parks are not under the city's jurisdiction for substandard housing, that falls under HCD, the Housing Community Development at the state level. So, mobile homes are in their own special category, which creates quite a bit of challenges, because you're dealing directly with the state. So, normally, we get those type of complaints inside mobile home parks, we try to work with the state for those type of issues, because our jurisdiction inside the mobile homes gets a little cloudy, shall we say. It's a little more difficult.
Sure. And when does the beautification committee start? Do we have a date yet?
Yeah, the next, we were hoping to, we were hoping to bring that this evening, weren't quite ready for it. So, it will be on the agenda for the May thirteenth meeting.
Excellent, thank you, Sergeant, thank you.
Welcome.
Are there any other questions from the council, before I see if there's anyone in the audience that had any questions? I know this is just a discussion item, but I did wanna open it up to see if there's anyone in the audience that had any comments.
My name is Lee Brandt. I just had a, a question to Jason or somebody that might remember. Years ago, we used to be able to take our, our, our city bill to Bertolati and dump, you know, like twice a year. Take our own stuff. I mean, I know that they come out to your house, you know, and they'll pick it up. But, you know, if I create a pile in my backyard that, you know, doesn't warrant, you know, Bertolati, you know, come pick it up, and I add to it, can I take it? I mean, is there something that we can work out with Bertolati? If I can take my bill with me, you know, maybe twice a year, you know, and give me, you know, a chance to dump, you know, whatever? You know, it's just suggesting the help with the illegal dumping.
Good question. Yeah, it's currently not in the contract with Bertolati, so it is something we'd have to negotiate with them. We're meeting with Bertolati now on a monthly basis, and walking through these types of options and considerations, as we've mentioned at the council in terms of the illegal dumps and the bulk item pickups, and other ways of being creative to try and, you know, assist in that. You know, unfortunately, you know, you're a responsible citizen, you know, you're concerned about cleaning up.
I understand, I understand the fact that I'm educated, and I understand how everything works.
Right, but that's exactly what we're trying to find, other ways to get to education and getting folks to do that. And so, that is something that has been discussed with Bertolati, and how we can get there, giving other opportunities. We have a lot right now, but trying to find other ways, exactly.
Did that happen years ago? I mean, did we used to be able to do that?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, it was part of that, the, the, kind of an older contract that we have with Bertolati.
So, I didn't dream it.
No, you didn't dream it, it was definitely a part.
Is there anyone else?
Alright, we appreciate, again, that's our contact information. Let Mr. Wells know if you guys have an issue or a problem, and we'll get on it. Appreciate you guys' time.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move to council member referrals, is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda?
Yes. So, over the weekend, we, the council, the mayor, and Mr. Helenan received a serious email from our finance director Suzanne Dean. Suzanne, would you please take the time to explain the email that you sent out?
At this point, I, I would prefer that we leave that to legal counsel to address. We're not gonna address that right now.
Is that gonna be discussed in closed session?
Again, until I get an opinion from legal counsel, we're not going to discuss that.
Okay, got it, thank you, appreciate it.
And just so that you know, I have legal counsel looking into it, and we'll report back to you once I find out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it.
Anyone else? Oh, I thought you were pushing your button, Councilmember Klein? Nope, okay. But this time, we'll move to reports, I don't have anything to report. How about Councilmember Klein?
Well, I do have something to report, and, you know, I was going back and forth whether it should have been council referrals or reports. You know, first off, I wanna, hope everybody had a good Easter. And I live pretty close to Smyrna Park. Smyrna Park was pretty busy over the weekend, there was probably twenty to twenty-five families, I would say, that enjoyed the park. But then this morning, as I'm driving by, there's trash all over the place. It looked like there was an illegal dump, it looked like people really don't care about our park. Now, I don't know if it was the individuals that were using the park, or if it was somebody going through to get recyclables, but it is just screwed, it's just all over the place. I would like to thank Ms. Wilson, because she took it a step further and took pictures, and she sent them to me. And, you know, I don't know what can be done with it, whether we put the cameras in the park for the holidays. But, you know, this council, over the last few years, have worked hard to add to the park system. You know, with Rhino Park, we just planted some more, more trees in Persephone Park. I know we're doing some design phases on a couple of other parks, and that's to benefit the citizens of Series. But yet, I don't think they reciprocated back by showing their appreciation with all the trash, and the lack of respect they have for other individuals that wanna use it. I think that it is very unfair to city staff, and to clean after, clean up after them. But yet, it has to be done, because it is a city-owned park. And, you know, I would like to maybe have a further discussion with this a little bit later on, with the city manager and the code enforcement, that maybe we can take temporary cameras. It might be a violation of, of, of privacy, but it is a publicly-owned park, that, you know, something could be done, because it looked awful today. I mean, I hoped everybody enjoyed it, but it was, it was awful. You know, and, and with Ms. Wilson's approval, I'd like to share the, share the pictures with, with the Series Courier. You know, I, I would like to take it a step further to show that, you know, we wasted too much time to clean this up for everybody else to enjoy the park. That's all I gotta say.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Mr. Wells, do you have an update on the landscaping along Aristocrat and Malick?
The project is, part of the park project in the, it is finishing up design, hope to be out of construction here, and then, out to bid in the next couple of months.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Councilmember Drossit? Councilmember Condon?
Sure, my office hours will be canceled this weekend, on the twenty-seventh, I will be in Fresno for the Cherokee Nation's annual powwow. I look forward to seeing any Cherokee citizens out there there. My office hours will reconvene the following Saturday, May fourth, hope to see you then.
Okay, Ms. Dean's. Nubia, anything?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Wells?
As I mentioned, as I mentioned earlier, the Adopt a Park and Beautification Committee will come for the next meeting on May thirteenth.
Mr. Westbrook?
Yes, two events the chambers having this week, one Friday morning, seven o'clock in this building, the Legislative Breakfast. And then Saturday, April twenty-seventh, I believe that they're planning a highway cleanup, so if you would like to participate in that effort, please contact the chamber.
Okay. Mr. Pria, I think? Mr. Collins? Congratulations. Kevin? Okay. Jeremy? Supervisor DiMartini? Alright, with that, it looks like we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be Monday, May thirteenth at six PM. Thank you.